Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the City of Southfield City Council, conducted as a committee of the whole via WebEx on March 1st at 6 o'clock. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thanks. President Brightwell?
Here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Morris?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum. The mayor, deputy city administrator, and other department heads are on the line as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first item for us tonight to be discussed is the authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the police department. Chief Barron, are you on the line?
Council President, I believe Alvin Jensen from the Department of Public Works was scheduled to be on this.
Oh, that's right, A.J. Are you on the line, A.J.?
Unfortunately, I do not see him.
Okay, well, is this something you can do, John, or you want me to move it till later into the evening? Maybe they'll just join in a minute.
They may want to join. I will check with Mr. Jensen myself, and if not, I can address it.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll move on to item two, and then you can let me know, okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam President?
Yes.
This is Lieutenant Taylor with the Southfield Police Department. I also have Sergeant Jason Snyder here. So if we can be of assistance.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe you and John can go ahead and do the presentation for the purchase of the vehicles. I think they're in the motor pool. That's probably why A.J. was going to do them. Okay, we'll come back to this item after. You both let me know when you want to talk about it. Our next item is implement Q-Frame for the improvement of the city's cybersecurity posture. And I believe that's you, Renee.
Yes, Madam President. Good evening, Council. This is to improve our cybersecurity practices by setting up a framework based on the National Institute Standards and Technologies Framework for Improving Critical Infrastructure Cybersecurity, or the NISTCSF. It's going to allow us to basically look at all our practices in tech and anything in the city pertaining to cybersecurity and see where any deficiencies lie in. And that way, we can have something that's actionable to actually improve and mitigate and improve any of those deficiencies. This program is $36,300 for the year. And it will produce a deliverable of basically a kind of like a checklist of this is everything that we looked at that, you know, that's supposed to be looked at, and we didn't miss anything on it.
Will this also notify you or let you know if there's something that you need to look at? Like something new, you know, as cybersecurity, something is new coming out all the time? Will it give you like some kind of alerts, like you need to?
Well, this framework is kind of like the rulebook, you know. We're going to actually be comparing ourselves to this rulebook of, okay, we have this set of requirements, and how are we meeting these requirements or not? And if not, what is our plan to fix those?
Okay, I got it.
To bring us up to those requirements.
Okay. I will open it up. Were you finished? I'm sorry, Renee.
Yeah, I'm finished, Madam President.
Okay, I'll open it up to the council for questions or looking for more information or anything like that, or any questions that they may have for you, Renee. So please hold on for just a minute. And Councilwoman Banks, I'll start with you.
No questions this evening, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Brightwell?
Renee, I have a generic question. And obviously, cybersecurity has been a big concern of mine since I've been on council. A lot of major cities, they have been hit over the years, at least last five, six years I've been on council. So does this bring us, let's just say, as near to perfect as we possibly can, given the science and the technology as of today?
Yes, this will actually help us identify everything based on current technology and practices of where we're at. And, you know, will help us identify anything that we might have missed, because there's so many stuff out there. And it's actually an external, you know, external set of eyes looking at this with us.
Great, great. So this is best practices as of today with respect to this particular item?
Correct, according to the National Institute Standards and Technology.
Okay, good, good. I have no problem with that. That's where I want us to be, at the, you know, cutting edge in or utilizing the best practices as of today according to the industry that you're in. So I appreciate it, Renee. And I know you guys are doing a good job over there. I appreciate it. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, Councilman Brightwell pretty much, I think, put it all together there for me as far as I was concerned. I mean, I think it's just important for all of us, for the city, to be in, to have our security as best as possible, because we know that, you know, this is taking, you know, there are different breaches taking place, even at the, you know, state and national levels. So I'm glad we're being proactive in this regard. So I think we should move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this one.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Renee, when will this be implemented?
As soon as we approve this, we will start implementing it right away. And it's going to take a few months to go through everything. And by the end of the year, I'm looking to probably conduct a, well, not probably, but we'll be conducting a penetration test to actually validate everything.
Okay. And how often do you think you should be upgrading these or up to industry standards?
Well, this is a kind of like writing a book.
Yeah.
So this should be reviewed at least once a year, but it's going to be going at least monthly, on a monthly basis of reviewing this, looking at this, to see if there's any changes or additions.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. All right, so this will move to our consent agenda next week, unless there's... Is there anyone else on the call that want to comment or have any questions for Renee before we move on? Okay, hearing none. Again, this will be on the consent agenda for next week for approval. Okay?
Thank you, Madam President.
All right, we'll go to our next item.
I think that A.J., Mr. Jensen is on the line now.
Oh, okay. So we'll go back to item one?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the police department. Mr. Jensen, are you on the line?
Well, I guess he's no longer here.
Okay. We had a police officer that was going to speak to this as well. Is he still on the call?
Yeah, Lieutenant Taylor is on the line still, yes.
Did you want to speak, Lieutenant Taylor?
Yes. Do you guys have any specific questions regarding this or what information you need from me? Because I know, which my understanding, DPW usually does the presentation for this, but I can answer any questions from you guys.
Okay. Council, do you want me to... Do you have questions formulated, or did you need to hear the presentation?
Seems like this is one of our kind of routine things.
Routine, mhm. All right, well...
This is Councilman Cruz, I'm sorry. So I'm okay with it.
Okay, I was going to say I'll just start with you, Councilman Cruz. Thank you for that. Jason, Councilman Hoskins, do you have any questions or?
No questions for me.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me, I'm good, thanks.
Great. Councilwoman Morris?
No, I am in support of the purchase of the replacement vehicle, so I have no questions, thank you.
And Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I just have one question. We're replacing the Ford Fusions with the Impalas. Isn't the Impala larger car than the Ford Fusion?
No, just the Impalas are the older vehicles that are going to actually be replaced by the Ford Fusions. It's the other way.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions. I think this is an annual renewal of, you know, replacement vehicles. Okay, I'm fine with it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your availability, Officer Taylor. Seeing that there's no other questions, this will also move to our consent agenda for next week.
Thank you, Madam President, appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next item is replace city's institutional network, the INET.
That is me again, Madam President.
Okay.
So back in 2000, we partnered with Media One to create our INET, to actually build our INET as a partnership. Somewhere along the line, Media One was bought by Comcast. And then in 2015, the franchising agreement was expiring, and we sent out a bid to replace the INET. And Comcast gave us another offer on the INET to continue usage until October 2021. Until then, after that, we would have to pay a set price for it. But during the talks with them, they've tried to switch out what the product that we were receiving to a different product, which was not in the best in the city's interest. So it was actually sent out by, to a third party to create the specs for the INET based on what we currently have. And then we got into an agreement with Comcast back in 2015 to extend this out to this year. Now, we sent the same RFP back out, and we had three vendors bid on it. And we are choosing to go with Crown Castle to replace our INET on it for this total price of $1.874 million for the next total for 20 years. Initial project cost is going to be $770,000. That's to replace all the fiber that runs between all the buildings with a redundant ring, so to say. And basically, give us what we have in place and still be able to expand, have some room for growth to expand out our speed between our connectivity between all the buildings. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, let me go through the council. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me on this.
Okay. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yeah, thank you. Renee, the question I have is, how long will this last?
So fiber is... The manufacturer's warranty fiber for 20 years.
So then after 20 years, we may need to make improvements? Are we going to have to make, you know, improvements throughout those 20 years?
It's at the end of the year, because fiber will actually start to degrade. You know, it becomes, as it degrades, it starts to break down and you end up with more issues down the road. But if you keep maintenance up on it and replace it as needed, it'll last. You know, just keep going. So the biggest thing is the coverings, the casings on the fiber that starts to degrade and go bad, so that gets replaced out.
Okay, so if I understand it, there's just this one-time cost to install it, and then after that, we, there's really no other, no other major costs, like an annual fee or anything like that? Is that what I understand correctly?
We have this one-time cost, and then we'll have the maintenance costs to keep the maintenance.
And that's a...
Right.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. Yes, hi, Renee. I was just wondering, what's the timeframe on having this installed?
The winning bid said they can complete it within five to six months, which is going to put us right up into the deadline that we have to, that we'll stop using the Comcast fiber.
Okay, yeah, all right, good. That's what I was, that's what I was wondering. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions. I'm just happy, Renee, that we're starting this process now versus waiting until October 1st, 2021, when it expires. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Renee, what is the name of this vendor again?
Crown Castle.
Okay. How long have they been around? Are they... I just wanted, well, how long have they been around?
Well, they're an S&amp;P 500 company. They've been around for 25 years.
Okay, okay, so they're reliable and they do good work?
Yes, we've been checking references with these companies.
Okay. All right. And I hate to ask you, but you said it's called Cum Castle?
Crown Castle.
Crown, okay, good enough. Okay, thanks, Renee. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I really don't have any issues with this. I'm just, the 20 years is just kind of concerning to me a bit. But is that, is that in the normal timeframe to do something like this, Renee?
Yes. Our last RFP was, we were looking at 15- and 20-year options, and the 20-year options actually gave us the best price. And it also locks in our price for 20 years, which is pretty good, considering when we went out the RFP last time in 2015, the prices were really good. Now they're like almost double for what the bids came in.
Okay, all right, very good. Just wanted to get an idea of that, you know. This, I know this is your side of the world, but that's what studies sessions for. So thank you. No other questions, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else on the call that have any questions for Renee regarding this topic on the INET? Okay, hearing none. This will be on the consent agenda for Monday?
Thank you, Madam President.
Mhm. Okay, moving right along. The next one is the preliminary discussion regarding new Walgreens on West 12 Mile Road. I believe this is a presentation for discussion only from the planning department?
That's correct, Madam Chair. This is Planner Crowe. Next slide, please. This is for discussion purposes only. The petitioner, Paul Weisenberger, is on the line that can respond after I do my introduction. But this is a proposed Walgreens with the north side of 12 Mile between Marshall and Fairfax. There's an existing Walgreens located at the southwest corner of Greenfield and 12 Mile. I believe that that Walgreens would relocate to this site if they're successful in the rezoning and approvals that are proposed. They're looking at building a 9,400-square-foot Walgreens retail store with drive-through pharmacy. Next slide, please. The current site has OS office service zoning on the frontage of the property with vehicular parking and single-family RA on the north portions of the property. Council may recall that the frontage last year or so was approved for a medical office building. That project has gone away, and the new proposal is the freestanding Walgreens with drive-through. And in order to do that, on the right of your screen, they need to rezone 80% of the property to B3 with a vehicular parking buffer to handle traffic circulation and some additional parking. Next slide. The future land use plan supports local mixed use, but only for the frontage of 12 Mile and then moderate-density single-family on the northern half of the property. Next slide. This is a conceptual site plan that is being proposed with circulation around the building, the drive-through on the north side, and ingress and egress onto Marshall Street and Fairfax Street, as well as a two-way entrance and egress off of 12 Mile Road. Next slide. These are some proposed elevations. Next slide. If we could go back to the site plan, please. One more slide. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Weisenberger if he wants to make any additional comments. And then planning staff will be available to answer any questions that the council may have. Again, this is for discussion purposes only tonight to give the applicant some feedback before moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Terry. I think Terry covered the proposal. I will say that the master plan does call for local mixed use on what is, I consider, the bulk of the property, which would include, you know, the intent in your text of your master plan is small-scale retail establishments less than 20,000. This is just under 10. It is a personal service business, and it probably would serve a radius of about a mile and a half out. So I think it meets the general intent of your mixed-use master plan. Obviously, we have a rezoning request from RA to parking. The purpose of that is to keep the building on the area that would be zone B3. We'd have limited employee parking on the north end. If you can see the site plan there, it's parallel parking. That would not be your in-and-out customer parking. That would be employee parking. We'd be happy to work with staff and council, planning commission, on what's the right buffer along that northern property line. We do have a nice amount of space in which to plant, plenty of plantings and/or fences. The site is set up to account for not only drive-through but also deliveries and dumpster enclosures, which you'll see on the left side of the building. There was sensitivity in the design to keep those further away from the residents. And so that's why you see them closer to the 12 Mile part of the site plan versus to the north. I've got Jamie Schmidt on the phone, I believe, and he'd be happy to answer any questions as to Walgreens relocation and why. But we are respectfully requesting that hopefully we get some decent feedback tonight to move forward with the rezoning request. And we're excited to move forward with the proposal.
If I could, through the chair, I think it would be helpful if the Walgreens representative at least made an introductory comment of why you're relocating and why you chose this site before we go to questions. Thank you.
Mr. Weisberger, did you want to?
Oh, I'm hoping Jamie was on the phone. I know he's having some troubles before we jumped on the line. But Jamie, are you present? If not, I'll do my best.
I can hear you, I'm in the audio.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jamie Schmidt. I'm with Walgreens. We are currently on the corner of Greenfield and 12 in a 15,000-square-foot building that is not making any money. We don't want to abandon the trade area. We spent 25 years serving the community and would rather take and transfer the business across the street into a smaller, more efficient building and stay there for the next 20 years. That's the intent. We designed the building as a 10,000-square-foot footprint with a smaller front end. The pharmacy will stay the exact same size with the same convenience of drive-through. And we don't anticipate losing any pharmacy customers through the move.
Through the chair, this is Planner Crowe to Mr. Schmidt. Isn't there any ability to downsize at your current location? Make a smaller footprint?
We investigated that, the cost to do that and separate the utilities and the HVAC system, et cetera, so that the other part of the building could be leased. It's so expensive that it was easier, believe it or not, to build a brand-new building or have somebody else build a brand-new building and just let us rent it.
Through the chair, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll start with you, Mr. Mandelbaum?
You know, I don't have any questions. I understand that it was before proposed as a, you know, for medical office. But I guess my question is, you know, where the... You have the residential landscape buffer. You said it's only just greenery. Do we think that that's going to be enough for the residents? That's my main concern, is this is a... You know, Walgreens can get pretty busy. I just don't want to impose anything in the residential area too much. I know that we do have buildings that back up to them. There's usually a brick wall, or it's never kind of pushed into the neighborhood this much. So I was just wondering, is this done anywhere else? Is there going to be a wall? Is it just going to be greenery? What's the ultimate goal?
Yeah, if I could, through the chair, you know, that's a real specific site plan question, and I believe we would require a screening wall. I think the point here is to give them feedback on the proposed use for this location. And my concern is that even though the front half of the property is zoned OS and the future land use is mixed use, this is about double the encroachment into the single-family residential neighborhood. And the fact that the drive-through is on the... and the fact that the drive-through is on the other side. It's whether or not the council feels this project's palpable with the existing single-family. Again, if this was on the front half or the adjacent 12 Mile Road, similar to what the office use was, that would, you know, provide more mitigation and buffering into the residential neighborhood. So yes, when we get down to site plan, we can require a wall. We can require additional green space. But it's the depth of encroachment to the north or into the neighborhood that concerns me at this point. And before we get down to the details of buffering and screening, whether or not council's comfortable, ultimately, you have to approve the rezoning to allow this project to happen.
Right, because, you know, the other thing that I'm looking at is, you know, I don't care for the egress onto Fairfax and Marshall's, Marshall Street. You know, that's the only thing I'm torn on. Like you said, it's, you know, it's that double depth into the residential that I'm just, I'm on the fence about. Other than that, I don't really have any questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. Yeah, my concerns are similar to those of Councilman Mandelbaum. I just, I see that the drive-through, I believe, would that be the drive-through pharmacy?
Correct.
Is facing that side and that bump against the residential community. So I was just wondering if there was going to be a wall or something, but I know we'll get down to that further on in the process. Does Walgreens plan to offer the vaccine at this location?
That is a good question. Walgreens and CVS both nationally have been chosen to distribute the vaccine. I don't believe the finalized list has been put together yet.
Oh, okay. And Jamie, what are your plans for the current location?
We currently lease it and the current owner is in bankruptcy. So it'll probably come out of bankruptcy and then be re-leased into something else.
Okay. Okay, no further questions for me.
Okay. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. It seems like most drugstores, you know, that I'm aware of in Southfield and, you know, in surrounding communities, they're all on corner lots. And I just find this to be a little bit odd, the location. The proposed location, it's, you know, adjacent to a neighborhood. It just does not seem like it's viable, a viable business in this area. You know, it looks, you know, I drove by it today, the area. It just seems like it's going to be encroachment to the residential neighborhoods that are behind the store. And I agree with the other comments that my colleagues made or have made this evening. I'm not excited about this situation for this proposal. I'd rather see the Walgreens be on a corner, on a corner piece of property. And I think their present location, I mean, I believe Mr. Schmidt said that they're losing money at that store, but whenever I drive by, it seems like there's cars there. So I'm not sure if how much money they'll save by reducing it and building a new store. You're only removing 5,000 square feet. So I don't know if I'm in favor of this proposal at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I'm here. Is it on mute? I'm familiar with this location. Matter of fact, for the last couple of years, I got my flu shot there. So as far as, you did mention that this is a leased location and that the current owner, it will be up on them to take care of that site if you decide to vacate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I know, I'm not sure the timing of this, but clearly there would have to be some education of the neighborhood. So would that be a part of your plan if this goes forward? Would be the education of the neighborhood and or socializing this with the neighborhood?
Yeah, this is Paul Weisberger speaking. Yeah, we would do a community outreach and set up a time to go door-to-door with the adjacent properties. I will say that we have no problem with meeting whatever buffering requirements the city comes up with. We did go through many variations of this site plan. And in order to fit the size requirement that's needed and also put the dumpster and the delivery bays away from the residential area, this is about as good as we could come up with in terms of trying to be sensitive to that. We do have truck radius turning that is required to get in to get those deliveries in and the dumpster, you know, removal. So we were cognizant of the fact that we had some entrances onto Fairfax and Marshall. But again, as it relates to the Walgreens property, the good news is, as my former mentor said, God only created so many, you know, corners. I'm confident that the landlord, whoever the successor landlord is coming out of bankruptcy, will be able to repurpose that building without any problems. So we're looking at this as, you know, bringing an increase in tax base to the city. I do not see the Walgreens building sitting mothballed for years to come. And again, it's at Greenfield and 12 Mile.
Yeah. Yeah, and I wanted to add to any proprietary information with Walgreens. But now by downsizing, are you losing money because of your fixed costs there at that location? Because in essence, if you're just on a business plan, a business strategy standpoint, you're just moving from one location to another location, you still have the same market. So are you just worried about fixed costs you're trying to get rid of? Jamie, I assume you might be able to answer that. Jamie is still around.
I think you're on mute, Jamie.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, it's a combination of overhead rent and the fact that our front-end of the store, which is where we sell greeting cards and so forth, has been copied by every retailer in the United States. So our front-end sales have dropped. The idea of a smaller box, while it's not on a corner, we're able to efficiently take all the skews that don't turn over and we can take and only have profitable skews, if you will, in the front, meaning items that we'll be able to sell. Yeah, at 15,000 square feet, we have just a lot of dead weight right now.
I definitely appreciate the discussion and I would look forward to a robust discussion on this particular proposal. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I don't really, I don't want to stop this conversation. So I'm okay with it at this present time, but I do feel much like Councilwoman Banks in terms of the location and such. It's, I don't know, it's just, it doesn't, it just doesn't have a good vibe to it to me right now. But, you know, maybe the more we talk about it, the better I might feel about it. But like I said, I'm not trying to hold it up. I do want to ask, though, Jamie, why has Walgreens not been able to make money on that corner?
Suggest probably the huge rent we pay. When we built that store 25 years ago, we assembled four pieces of property and we thought we could make it and we have not been able to.
Have you tried to renegotiate your costs?
Oh, yes, sir. It's in bankruptcy. So the servicer is not able to negotiate. They're going to sell it and then whoever gets it will be able to pick it up. The mid-block location is not as bad as it seems. We do it quite often. We spent 25 years in the same spot getting those customers to our door. We're moving less than 300 yards. So I think they will still be able to find us. And we're still in a retail area that is, albeit, it's got some different zoning. But I think that we can peacefully coexist with the residential behind us.
Okay. Well, the only other thing I would just say is I appreciate you all wanting to stay in Southfield. So, you know, I wanted us to do whatever we can to help you guys be successful as well as the city. And I understand that, you know, that's an opportunity for new tax, a new tax base to come and for you guys to get where you need to be. So let's keep talking. So thank you for the presentation today.
I appreciate that, sir. So it's not a light decision. It's a very expensive move. But I think that it's the only thing that will get us another 20 years in Southfield. Otherwise, it's a matter of just closing. And no one wants that. That's not good for anybody.
Understood. That's what I said. I just wanted to let you know, we appreciate you staying, wanting to stay in Southfield. Thank you.
And Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. Yeah, I think I just echo everything that my colleagues have been saying. I too have concerns about that buffer as well as the egress and ingress on Fairfax and Marshall. Just like Councilman Cruz was saying, I mean, I don't necessarily have an issue with it. But even I was trying to think of other locations that are like this, other kind of retail locations that are like this, that are so close to a neighborhood. I'm not, I'm not like totally against this, but, you know, just like I think everyone was saying, I too have some questions slash concerns.
Okay, thank you. And I'm still, I'm teetering on this. I don't, I've not had a large store such as Walgreens in the neighborhood, so I am concerned about that. I hear what you're saying and I really appreciate you keeping your business here in Southfield. And we want to work with you to do that, but I'd really be interested in hearing what the neighborhood is going to say. And I don't see on here where your garbage is going to be, although I don't, right now, I don't see an issue with it. But, because you don't have, like, food and stuff that would spoil or what have you, but that might become a concern depending on where it's located on the, in your project. It probably will be back closer to that residential buffer wall or something like that. So I would just be mindful of that, make sure it's screened and kept up pretty nice if this goes forward. But I really would like to hear what the neighborhood, the residents in the neighborhood, what they feel about it. Because I'm just kind of, it's unknown, but I can see that it's a good place. This is right down the street from where I live. I know where it is. I know the front part, it might be okay. I just don't know with it being in the neighborhood, backing up against the neighborhood. And just a little bit of concern, and I think it's just because I don't know. So once this is vetted and we talk about it more and it goes through the planning and site plan and all of that, it'll probably feel better when it comes back. So that's all I can say right now. So. I do know that we have other people on that may want to speak to this topic. I think the mayor has a comment and I don't know if anyone else on the call has a comment. But Mayor, would you like to speak at this time?
Yes, thank you, Council President. My concern with this is what's been stated, the proximity and the traffic on these residential streets. Personally, I wouldn't want to live being in the houses right near it, this store. I don't know if the petitioner has set the hours of that this store would be open. I'd assume it's seven days a week. As opposed to when council approved the medical office building, it was, I believe, smaller and it was actually closer to 12 Mile. And it was a Monday through Friday proposed operation. So there's a difference here and I think there's certainly going to be more volume. So the concerns that have already been expressed, I share those. Thank you.
And I think we should ask for a traffic study for sure, but also wear and tear on the streets. I don't know if you've driven up and down those streets. I have. And sometimes, just with the normal weight of cars, the streets get pretty torn up. So with the traffic, with trucks delivering and that kind of thing, and more cars going in and out of Walgreens would cause more wear and tear on the streets. So I don't know if Lee could offer some kind of, maybe, I don't know, to see what, how the streets might hold up as well. Because that would impact the residents in another way. So those are my concerns and my questions. So I'll turn it back over to you, Terry.
Yeah, I just have a few follow-up questions. I was going to ask the question about hours of operation before the mayor asked. So could you just give us your typical hours of operation for the store and then for the proposed drive-through, please? Paul, did you hear me? Jamie?
Oh, I heard you. I was hoping Jamie would answer that question. It seems to work when I ask for him to talk. So Jamie, are you there?
And can you hear me now?
Yep.
I assume it'd be the same as the big box, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The pharmacy would be open 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, shorter hours on Sunday.
Sunday's a little shorter.
Yes, sir.
Let's just assume a 90-day review process and you get all your approvals. From construction groundbreaking to opening, what's your timeline for this project?
Probably about eight months.
Okay. And then, are there any deed or lease restrictions on your current site that prevents another drugstore from backfilling that space?
I would imagine there are, yes.
Okay. And then, yeah, I know we haven't gone through the whole review process yet, but the traffic study, you might want to get a jump on that because I'm sure we're going to request that during the planning commission. And I think some preliminary comments from the traffic engineer was the concern about the egress and ingress being so far north, encroaching into the neighborhood. When you guys look at the drawing board, see if that, they can be moved closer to 12 Mile. Other than that, Madam Chair, I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else, Mr. Schmidt or Mr. Weisberger, do you have any other comments that you'd like to leave us with?
No, I would just like to thank you for your time. We'll go back and sharpen our pencils based on some of the comments that were made and really see if there's anything, anything better that we can do to try to mitigate some of the issues there.
Okay.
And we'll be back in touch. But I do appreciate you guys taking the time out to have this informal discussion.
Madam Chair, I have one additional question.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Brightwell.
Paul and Jamie, how many employees do you have there?
About 25.
Okay. Do you know, is there a certain number that are Southfield residents? Would you happen to know that?
I would not. We obviously try to hire locally. Pharmacist probably travel a little further, so do the technicians, but, yeah, we do try to hire locally.
Okay, all right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and we just want to say thank you for trying to stay here in Southfield and we'll work with you on whatever we can. So thank you for your time as well.
Thank you so much. All have a good evening.
You too.
Okay.
Our next item is a presentation and discussion regarding the tax amendment related to small cell facilities. Uh, small box retail and the woodland wetlands.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. This is Planner Crood again, next slide. Uh, so we have a council-initiated zoning ordinance tax amendment to update our woodlands and tree protection ordinance. To update uh, our wetlands and water cro- course protection ordinance. To add small box retail provisions that we previously discussed. As well as small cell facility provisions to the wireless communication facilities ordinance that has been previously presented by the city attorney. Next slide. We um, recently have been going through our ordinances and realized that our um, woodlands and wetlands. Were still referring to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. And now it's the um, the Michigan Department of Eagle Environmental Great Lakes Authority. Uh, so we wanted to update uh, the ordinances to reflect that. Um, clean up some of the definitions. Uh, talk about um, increasing the size of replacement trees um, that many of our adjacent communities are requiring. Next slide. Um, reducing um, the required tree replacement from eight inch in diameter um, to six inches. Change some of the uh, submissions for site plan requirements. Only allowing a certain percentage of required trees to be replaced by arborvitae, which are those green bushy. Um, trees, shrubs, um, and then um, requiring a replacement of two to one. Uh, as opposed to one to one, which um, again is in line with many other progressive communities. Next slide. We um, uh, again, uh, as I indicated, changing the acronyms from the Michigan Departments um, that now regulate. Um, they're also in the woodlands ordinance, it refers to the director, the director of planning. And in the wetlands ordinance, it refers to the city planner. So we've cleaned up those definitions as well. Next slide. And then um, moving on to small box discount retail, as you recall, um, we previously had this as a discussion item. We have identified 16 such stores. Uh, that high concentrations may reduce in a negative perception and reduce viability for traditional grocery stores offering fresh food options. You've heard um, some of the larger communities call, um, talking about food deserts because. Residents can't get access to healthy um, green vegetables and fruits. We also want to um, provide separation and limits on hours of operation and to. Review these as a special land use. Next slide. So we've um, defined what a small box discount store and that's ranging from five to 15,000 square feet. And they also do not uh, include pharmacies or a certain floor area percentages for fresh foods and vegetables. This would be allowed uh, in, as a special use in neighborhood service, regional service, regional center. All of our commercial districts and I-1 on Telegraph Road only. Uh, we have a one-mile separation from property line to property line. And hours of operation limitation from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And that any existing small box retail um, that's located effective. Before the date of approval shall be considered a legal non-conforming use. Therefore, they can continue to operate. They just can't expand or enlarge their businesses um, from their current location. Next slide. And we've identified where these 16 uh, existing facilities are. Council had asked, what is the maximum? And we've only identified two potential areas um, that could uh, entertain an additional um, small box retail. Uh, one of which does not have the proper zoning, um, the other on our northern part of our um, community. There's two potential locations, but once one is established, it knocks out the other. So if we adopt these, these guidelines with the one-mile separation, the maximum number we could have is one additional um, small box retail. And then the, the city is, is pretty much covered by the buffering of existing facilities. Next slide. And then finally, under the small cell wireless facilities that has been presented to council by the city attorney and outside council. There's a very small, narrow window of what we can regulate and what we can't regulate. The state law does allow in certain districts that are designated by the city, and these um, districts. Include the city center, Centropolis, the DVA, our two historic neighborhoods and our four individual historic districts. We do have some control over the ultimate size and look of those facilities. Next slide. And so these are the small cells that we want to avoid. These are the clutter with many antennas. The size and the location are not appropriate. Uh, and we want to have some control, at least in our, our designated districts um, from trying to prevent these, these monstrosities. Next slide. And, and this is an example of um, antennas that are housed inside um, a ci- a cylinder. They're more streamlined, they disappear, they're a little, little easier on the eye. And even these are the size of a typical refrigerator, but up, upper high. Um, we want to be able to require a design element that's more in keeping with our high design standards. Next slide. And these are the districts that have been mapped out where we would have some additional design control over. Next slide. And then for each district, we've done an inventory of existing streetscape furniture and um, utilities. And signage, and we've come up with a color scheme that would complement that should a small cell. Be installed, for example, in the city center would have to meet either our silver matching, many of our street furnishings. Or the dark gray metallic, which is um, compatible with many of our signs. Next slide. Uh, next slide. And we've uh, we've provided a design guideline, a draft for council so that the ordinance would regulate. What, what we could uh, have some design guidelines on and then the design guideline would. Would specify the color, size and location uh, that we would have some control over. And um, Wendell, you could quickly go through to the end here and just, just shows that uh. We have different colors and different branding for each of the districts that have been identified. And I believe uh, with that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has on these proposed tax amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you. Uh, Terry, a couple of things. Um, is there any way you can email out? Your um, portion of the presentation on the small box discount. I. Um, I did not get that in my packet. Um, some of the things that you shared with us this evening, I did have in the packet, but you know. Uh, the map of the 16 locations as well as the other slides you had, that wasn't in our packet. So can you send that, please?
Sure. I, I, it was my understanding that our PowerPoint presentation was included in the packet. So if, if you need something different than that, I'd be happy to send it to you.
Yes, please. And um. So if, so we're not, we're not limiting. Um, the number of small box discount stores in the city because based upon the uh, distance parameter. Um, uh, distance restrictions, we are now uh, can only have a maximum of 17.
Yeah, so in essence, it's, it's a, it's a backhanded way of limiting or putting a maximum number. Similar to what we've done with the amount of facilities and other uh.
Yes, but here's my question. So what if uh, someone wants to relocate? Like the Walgreens wants to go from Greenfield and 12 Mile, just, just up the street? What if another small box discount wanted to relocate? Would this prohibit them from doing that?
Well, um, it, it would in, in the sense that um. There, there would have to almost be two of, of them shutting down at the same time because. They would be nullified in anywhere else that they can go. Um, and any existing history would be considered a legal non-conforming use. So for example, we have a cluster of three, if one of them closed down, an, another one couldn't come in and replace it because. They would, they would be negated by the existing two. So there would be, have to be a lot of things done in sequence to allow for an additional. Um, small box and that would include many, many of them closing down. I think we're protected in the maximum number at, at 17 based on this one-mile buffer separation.
So it's, it could possibly happen that one, let's say one on Lasher and uh, uh, 11 Mile, Loser and 11 Mile. Shut down and wanted to move to the old location of the Walgreens on Greenfield and 12 Mile. Would that be prohibited?
Well, uh, if we could go back to the uh, the map window. The, the map that shows the small box with the rings around it. Um, I wonder where that is.
We have some interference on the call, so it seemed like some paper rustling or something. Could you please mute your line if you're not speaking? Thank you very much.
So uh, in your scenario, Ms. Morris, there would have to be an existing. Small box retail at that location that closed down. That wasn't buffered out by one of the other ones within a mile for it to be able to be relocated. If we look at um, 11 Mile and Loser, for example, there's three currently. They're all non-conforming. If one or two of those shut down, another one couldn't backfill because they would, they would be negated by the one that's still remaining. Those two couldn't go anywhere else other than if there's a conforming site somewhere else. So we have in two or three places, we have clusters of more than one small box retail. That is the maximum that they, they can be at those locations is non-conforming. They can't expand, they can't enlarge. If they close down, another one can't come in. And so I don't want to say never, but they would, they would have to meet all the other requirements in order to, to relocate to another location. And the only, the only possible area that we've identified with the right zoning and the buffering is Area 1 on this map. And once one goes in there, that negates the other potential site.
I just was really trying to, you know, I, I know we didn't get a chance to ask them if they had any lease restrictions. On small box discount stores. You did ask about another store like a Walgreens or another, you know, type of store like a Walgreens, but just. That would be my next question to them. Did they, do they have any lease restrictions on small box discount? Because I'm just trying to prohibit another small box store taking over that location.
Sure, but in, in this particular instance, there's no, there's no areas that are eligible for them to backfill with a small box. If we look at um, if we look at 12 Mile and Greenfield, there's already one within a mile of that location. I think it's just north of where the Walgreens is.
Okay, got it. Okay, that, that's it, Terry. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I have no questions on this. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
And Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
So this will come back to your um, public hearing at the end of the month, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the call that would care to speak to Terry about this or had any questions or comments at this time? Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll have this come back for the public hearing on the 22nd, I think it is? Or is it the 15th?
The 22nd, I believe.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Our next, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry if you want me to introduce it. Um, our next item is um, discussion on a proposed special use request for the Simmons House. Located at 26080 Berg Road. Next slide, please. And this site is, as many of council is aware, is part of the Berg Historic Site. And uh, we talked about this previously, that um, last fall, the council amended the ordinance to allow. For general office and not-for-profit office uses in very um, singular locations. It has to be owned by the city and it has to have the proper zoning and that it needs to receive special land use approval. And um, there is, as you know, a proposed um, office use for the former Simmons Building. Next slide. Uh, this is the location. Um, the house is, is located on the northwest corner of the property. Um, closest to Berg Road and, and facing the parking lot. Next slide. This is a quick site plan um, that will be done administratively as part of um, the special land use approval. But there's a small extension of sidewalk from the internal sidewalk to the main public walk that we require of everybody else. Um, there's some designation of barrier-free parking with, with appropriate ADA ramp and signage. There's um, some additional landscape screening. We are working with the city on, and the historic commission about an appropriate. Post office box uh, on the historic building. Next slide. Okay, if we can go back one. And I, I believe the uh, standard hours of operation being proposed are Monday through Sunday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I think Mr. McCrina is on the line to speak on behalf of, of the applicant and the city. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Again, this is scheduled um, at the end of the month for your special land use public hearing. And you're really just approving the use of the site as well as any um, special conditions, including hours of operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. McCrina, did you want to speak at all to this topic before we open it up to council?
Council President, I don't have much to add other than that this is pretty much the same use or a similar use that the city was using this building for before. Basic light office and it was without any zoning approval then. There will be some improvements coming to this area as a result of this office moving here, including extension of the sidewalk that I think Terry mentioned. So I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to council. Um, Councilwoman Banks, I'll start with you.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Brightwell?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Uh, nothing for me. Thank you.
Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yep, Terry, the, the, the only question I had, you mentioned that the hours of operation are, are Monday through Sunday, so that's seven days a week?
Yeah, that's correct. And um, the, the thinking is that, you know, once you establish hours of operation for special land use, it runs with the land. Whether it's this particular general office user or somebody else. Um, and um, you know, given the situation that this is a, a park and recreation site that's used seven days a week. Those hours of operation are, I think are reasonable. If this was in a, a residential neighborhood. Um, you know, maybe we'd be more inclined to reduce the hours on Sunday or Saturday. The current or the proposed office user is unlikely to use them uh, other than occasionally on the weekends. But since this special, special land use runs with the land. Uh, and it does permit from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, that's, that's what we're starting as a starting point. We certainly could reduce those, but that's what the ask is.
Got it. Okay, um, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, Terry, as you've indicated, this will come back to us at the end of the month?
At the 22nd, yes, sir.
Okay. Does anyone else want to comment on this that's on the line? Okay. Okay, hearing none, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Our next item is the Alliance of the Rouge Communities Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant for Tamarack Creek Stream and Wetland Restoration.
Thank you, Madam President. This is Brandy Stalachek, City Stormwater Manager, and I'm here to present that item.
Hi, Brandy.
Good evening, everybody. Hi. So this is for the Tamarack Stream Wetland Restoration Project. This project is located just off a ten mile to south of Lawrence Tech. The project includes a restoration of a detention basin and restoration of stream, of the stream length downstream of that basin. So there'll be habitat improvements to that basin and within that stream corridor south of that. The Alliance of Rouge Communities, which is, which we are a member of, the City of Southfield is, received a grant for, through the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Program through the Environmental Protection Agency, and a part of the grant is for this project. So this project would be fully funded at no cost to the city through this grant. So this item would include an inter-agency agreement with the Alliance of Rouge Communities that would allow us to receive the grant funds for that project. And then we also went out to bid for this project two weeks ago and received bids back last week, and received eight bids, and we received the acceptable low bid from England, Civil of Livonia, for one point eight six seven two three six million dollars. And so this item would also award the contract for the construction of the projects to England of Livonia. And so I can answer any other questions or go into more detail. This project has been going on for, we've been trying to get this project in place and finding funding for the project for the last fifteen years or so. So it's, we finally found money through the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, which is a good thing and has no match requirement for the city, which also is a good thing. We're looking, we're looking at hoping, hoping to starting construction in April or at the end of March. The project would probably be about a year and a half construction project.
Okay, well, that's great. I will open it up to council to see if they have any questions or comments for you. Hope you will just wait just one second. I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
Brandy, I like this. And just in a few words, what does this do for us?
Yeah, I probably should have started the project or the information with that. It actually improves habitat, reducing erosion downstream, manages flooding, also increases the storage volume of storm water coming into the detention basin that's currently there that's not really functioning. And so it also removes invasive species and improves riparian habitat. I'm sorry, that was more than a couple of sentences, but there's quite a few benefits to this project.
Yeah, that's fine. I think I kind of recall this a little bit, and I know there was a huge benefit to this, and I was glad to see it was, when I heard about it, it was in the works. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz.
No, I think Brandy answered my main question, which was simply, were there any strings attached to the grant? So if there's no matching funds required or anything else, I'm totally fine with it.
Great, okay.
Yep.
Go ahead, if you wanted to comment, Brandy, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, you know, we got a good bid back from a good contractor, so we were happy with the price of the bid and all of the grant funding. Actually, we'd have some additional for, you know, unforeseen site conditions if needed, so the funding should cover pretty much everything. I mean, it will cover everything.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Hoskins.
All my questions were pretty much answered, so I'm all set.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum.
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Morris.
No questions for me, thank you.
And Councilwoman Banks.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the call have any comments or questions for Brandy? Okay, Brandy, great presentation, thank you so much. So this will go on our consent agenda for next week, so thank you again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we come to our communications. Do we have anyone on the line for communications, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, I did just unmute everyone.
Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Good, one moment, please.
Okay.
Communication. What's that? Communication. One moment, please.
Okay.
They got to it fast.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullum, Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Madam President, tonight I wish to talk about Section eleven point eighteen. Eleven point eighteen in the Southfield City Charter. Section eleven point eighteen is entitled Amendments, which describes how this city council may, if it wishes, amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step Michigan state law, known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of nineteen oh nine. Thus making Section eleven point eighteen null and void. Yes, you heard me right. Section eleven point eighteen in the Southfield City Charter does not, and I repeat, does not conform with Michigan state law. In fact, eleven point eighteen has never, ever conformed with Michigan state law, period. Let me explain. Eleven point eighteen became null and void way back in nineteen fifty-eight, when the Southfield founding fathers attempted to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the original Southfield City Charter. That's when the nine-member Southfield City Charter Commission mistakenly deleted the second step in a two-step process. State law mandates, yesterday and today, that it takes two, two mandatory steps to amend the Southfield City Charter. Unfortunately, eleven point eighteen totally deletes state mandatory step number two. In a word, after sixty-three long, long, long years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and smell the coffee and do yourselves a full list of this favor and fix Section eleven point eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Hi. Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. For those residents that are always calling me with your concerns, my telephone number is still two four eight three four six zero four three nine. Thank you, Madam Chair, for asking your colleagues to mute their microphone when they are not speaking and when someone else has the floor. It is very noisy, very disruptive. It sounds like a daycare in the background, and I just thank you for bringing that to your colleagues' attention, that this is still a professional meeting and the same way you would conduct yourself in front of an audience on cable. You should do that on the phone as well. I couldn't really hear about Walgreens. Are they moving to a different location because they want a different building? Is it the business over there? I'm not sure if most of the council people would remember this, but a while back, and I say a while back, CBS used to be where the Dollar Tree is, and they were there for many, many years. The reason that they moved, and a lot of people did not know this, and I happen to know this because I had talked to the owners, CBS, in addition to paying their rent, was giving five percent of their gross sales to the owners of that particular property. That's why they purchased the property across the street, and it was their building. So I'm wondering if the fact that Walgreens wants, that Walgreens wants to move, is that a part of the problem? That in addition to paying rent, they're giving the owner, who I guess is going bankrupt or is filing bankruptcy or is in bankruptcy court, that he's giving an additional five percent, or the company is giving an additional five percent of the gross sales? Also, I wanted to remind people and remind the council that last week, the Detroit artist, Charles McGee, passed away, and he was in his nineties. We lost an amazing talent in our state, a renowned artist, a renowned artist. So I just wanted people to keep his family uplifted in prayer. And I'm trying to decide if I want to mention this, but I mentioned it to council and to you, Madam President, about moving communications up after the proclamations and the appointments. So I'm wondering if you would still consider doing that. And whoever is keeping the time, before the time is up, we're hearing a beeping noise that is quite disturbing, and maybe we should just hear one beep when the time is up as opposed to a series of twenty beeps, and then you still have fifteen seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that we have for communications?
Madam President, I do not believe we have anyone else for communications this evening.
Okay. All right, well.
Madam Chair, Madam President, this is Councilman Brightwell. I have something that's kind of tangsensitive. I know we don't have a council section on this.
Sure, sure.
But earlier today, I got a notice from the county, the county executive office, relative to veterans. And I know that individuals might not be listening who are veteran, but if you know a veteran, let them know that Oakland County is offering a veterans relief grant up to twenty-five hundred dollars per veteran. And the application is located on the county site. It's oakgov.com/veterans. This came out earlier this morning, so if you know of anyone that might be a veteran and might be in need of twenty-five hundred dollars, they should apply and more than likely might get a relief check. So that's from Oakland County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I could add one more thing.
Yes.
Along those same lines, today, the applications came out for small business relief from Oakland County, small businesses, and I know Shelley Freeman has done a lot of notifications across the community, but just a reminder that grants up to ten thousand dollars are available through the application process, and people can, interested parties can contact Rochelle Freeman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a comment before we take a vote on closed session?
Yes, Madam President, this is Councilman Cruz.
Yes, Councilman.
I just simply wanted to acknowledge the fact that today is March first, and it's the first day of Women's History Month, and that's important as Black History Month was me to February, March is as well, but it's celebrated in my mind all through the year. Many of the things that I've accomplished over the years have been due to very strong women who have been leaders and educators and such in my life, and I just wanted to use this platform, if you will, to, I won't go through all of the names because it's too many to name, but they all know who they are, and I appreciate you all, as well as you all, all the ladies on council. Happy Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you for that, thank you very much. Yes, and the International Day for Women's History is March eighth, and yes, I really appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Is there anyone else?
I'd like to make a statement to Madam President. I was, I was going to speak to the fact that today was March first in celebration of Women's History Month. I just want to give a shout out to Rosalyn G. Brewer. She is born and raised in Detroit, and since we had such a lengthy conversation about Walgreens this evening, she is slated to become the CEO of Walgreens on March fifteenth, and she will be the first black female CEO of a Fortune 500 company. So like Lloyd, I am so proud of our black female leadership and those women who have influenced me, and let's just give a shout out to Mrs. Brewer.
Congratulations, congratulations to her, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, council, I'll entertain a motion for closed session.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
Okay. Is there a second?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum, I second that.
Okay. It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz? Cruz? Yes?
Motion to go on closed session. Let it be known, we are going into closed session for the discussion of material exempt from discussion or disclosure by the state or federal statute. I just ask council next time when the motion is on the table to please include the language of why we're going into the closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so we'll pause and, everyone, go into the closed session line. We're back at our regular meeting, and we have one more topic. Council, I will entertain a motion.
Yes, Madam President, this is Councilman Cruz.
Yes, Councilman.
I would like to make a motion to, for our city attorney to undergo continuing negotiations with the school board and school district, if you will, with the proposed conditions of, one, approving the easement, two, one, emergency access only, two, installation of two gates on both ends, including the lower box acceptable to the Southfield Police and a dexter gate on Green Valley Drive side, and for compliance with the city's woodland ordinance.
I support that.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve permission for our city attorney to, uh, continue and to sign, uh, subject to the conditions that was just stated by Councilman Cruz for the, uh, easement access use of, by the, um, Southfield Public Schools.
Madam Chair, this is Planner Crowe. Can I offer a friendly amendment? Because I was typing quickly. It should, it should state lock box, L-O-C-K, box by the police department.
Gotcha. Because we do want the public to know this will not be an open space, um, unless there is an emergency, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And we also want the public to know that this was, came about due to the Southfield Public School in, uh, taking or using their, um, eminent domain for the condemnation lawsuit, uh, where they would, uh, take the property and, and use it. So the, the city is deciding to, um, make the best use of the taxpayer's dollars. If we decide to, if we all agree and vote on this, this vote will be because of that, uh, action being brought against the city.
Okay, let's, 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 we, we have a friendly amendment on the floor. So we need the, uh, Councilman Cruz to amend his original motion to include the amendment by Planner Crowe. And we would need Councilman, uh, Brightwell to second that friendly amendment, because that was the original motion on the floor.
Thank you.
I mean, I, 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 uh, accept the friendly amendment to my, uh, initial proposal.
I support that amendment.
Okay. So now it's been moved by Councilman Cruz and seconded by Councilman Brightwell for the acceptance of the friendly amendment to the original motion. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
No. However, I want it noted that my no vote is because the school board never considered another option as presented by the city and also that the residents have not been notified of this proposal. And I want that noted in the minutes, please. Thank you.
If I could speak through the chair for a moment?
Oh, let's finish the vote and then we'll, we'll let you speak, okay?
It's about the vote. I don't, I don't know that we can, through Robert's Rules, actually add addendums to our yes or no votes. It's either up or down. And I may be incorrect, and if I am, um, I, I'll, I'll stand corrected.
In the past, we've been able to clarify, uh, no vote, um, if you look at the minutes in previous years.
But we do operate under Robert's Rules, correct?
That's correct, and we've always operated under Robert's Rules.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you, do you happen to, uh, know offhand if that is acceptable or not? Maybe we've been doing it wrong.
Uh, I don't know off of hand, but I do know that it's not, uh, based on the way that we do our, our minutes. It's your, you're writing your minutes based off the motion. Um, so we can get some clarification from the city attorney, uh, when these minutes are prepared.
Okay, no problem. I'm sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't indictment against you, Ms. Banks. And, and by any means, I just want to make sure that we're getting ourselves closer to being correct on things.
No, no, and I understand, but if you look back over the years, people have justified their no, no votes for whatever reason. And I just, I mean, we discussed it in the closed session. If, if they had considered the option, I would have a different opinion.
Agreed. You, you certainly did, Madam Banks.
So I just want it noted in this, in the open session, that, um, if the, if the, another, if another, excuse me, if the school board had considered the, um, other options, you know, my vote may be different, but that wasn't even considered.
Understood. Thank you. I'm sorry. I, I didn't, I didn't, I don't want you to feel I was attacking you. I just wanted to ask the question, really. Thank you.
No, you weren't attacking me.
All right.
Brightwell?
Uh, yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Okay, that motion, uh, was adopted, and, uh, I just looked it up. When the discussion ensues after the motion was on the floor, at that point, you can discuss your opinion, yes or no, uh, without saying the vote on the topic. And then you have the roll call. Um, and then once, once the roll call is actually complete, you can address your vote in your, in the closing comments.
Okay, so would you like to me to repeat, or can you add my comments in the closing comments?
Yeah, we can do that. We'll do that.
Oh, okay, and, and there were two comments, so thank you.
I, I got it all. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Thank you, uh, uh, is there anything else tonight?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just thinking about something. Um, and, you know, back, back in, in the, uh, middle ages, when I was the council president, I had, I had a class, I had a person come in who was an expert on Robert's Rules of Order. I would like for the, the council to, if the clerk and you would agree to bring that person in again, and we could have another session on Robert's Rules of Order by, uh, an expert. If that lady is still around, Sharika, I would like for her to come in. We have some bona fide questions for asked for her now, so if we can perhaps schedule within the next several months, another session on Robert's Rules of Order.
And might I add, uh, Councilman Brightwell, that was a tag team effort in bringing her in.
Well, well, whatever, whatever tag team you need, um, I can, I can, um, I'll be supportive of it, and I would, I would hope Ms. Taylor would be supportive of it. Because it was a, a beneficial session for all of council on Robert's Rules of Order. I think we held it, um, we held it at night. We had, we, it coordinated something, a meeting. And it, we have so many questions coming up now relative to that within the last few. Well, it's, it's just good to have a, a refresher on Robert's Rules of Order by an expert. We can ask them live questions and relative questions to our functioning as a order, as an orderly council. If we ever had to go to court, we could always say, well, this is why we did certain things, so.
Right, and it was, it was concluded that certain things that we did historically were incorrect, and we did change those things based on that, uh, that training.
Okay, well, anyway, uh, Madam Chair, my, my, I would like to suggest that we have another training session on Robert's Order for the whole council, and, and an appropriate date and time in the future.
Thank you, yes. That would be fine. We can talk about that and discuss it. Uh, also, we should note that we're coming off of Black History Month, that we, here in the city of Southfield, have, I believe, the first black couple, Sharon and Joe Persons, who are both, uh, uh, I just lost my, um...
Parliamentarian somewhere.
Yes, yes. Here in the city of Southfield, that, that specializes in the Robert's Rules. And so we can also take advantage of the couple that lives here, if we wanted to as well. So, anything else for the, for this meeting?
Madam, I move to adjourn.
All right. Hearing no other questions, no other comments, meeting adjourned.